All right, Mr. Mayor, you can go ahead.
Okay. Well, Adam Wood, thank you so much for your interest in the possibility of serving on the Planning Commission. We already know that you have clear intent to get involved in the City of Seaside with your candidacy for the City Council. So tell us a little bit about your background and what causes you to want to get involved with the Planning Commission?
Well, I moved to Seaside from Everett, Washington, almost 13 years ago. It'll be 13 years in May.
Wow.
And, you know, my parents grew up, I grew up in Brandon, and my parents rose involved in the community. My dad was on the school board. My mom was president of the Chamber of Commerce for a number of years. And I really just have always had it instilled in me that to give back to the community you live in. And this community really welcomed me with open arms when I moved here. And, you know, I ran for city council, and obviously David kind of kicked my ass in that, in that race. But, you know, I've served five years on the Parks and Rec Foundation Board and actually with your wife Jan for a while. And, and just, I've always been looking at different ways to just give back to the community. And just really want to, you know, know that I did something good for the community.
Right. Well, I assume you've studied and looked at the role of Planning Commissioner.
Yes.
I say this in every one of these interviews, that I consider the Planning Commission job, that role in the community, to be in some ways more challenging and demanding than even this role on the City Council. It's a very important role.
Yeah.
Many of the actions of the Planning Commission set the tone for the direction of the city. And many times, the actions of the Planning Commission come to the council. So you've looked at the number of meetings, and have you attended a Planning Commission meeting in the past at all?
I haven't attended them. You know, I, I should have probably in the past, but, you know, with COVID and everything, I haven't, you know, since I kind of decided to get really involved, I haven't been able to attend a meeting. But, you know, I really, if you guys choose to appoint me to the board, I really look at jumping in, you know, headfirst and getting right into it and working with the team and getting things done.
Great. I'll open it to the floor for any of the council that would like to ask you any questions.
I would just say that I appreciate you putting your hat in the ring on this, Adam. I know Kathy did as well. We had that conversation after our live forum where,
Yeah.
you know, we kind of each committed to moving forward and, and supporting the city however we can after the election. So I appreciate you honoring that and wanting to be involved and help with the decisions that are being made.
I definitely look forward to doing that if I can.
Thank you, David. Other comments?
Well, Adam, you've looked at, sort of looked this over. You're ready to make the time commitment where you would be at meetings. And I know a planning commission, a lot of times they, they require a little bit of investigation and checking into law and a lot of zoning issues. How do you feel about all that and the extra time taken out of your life?
I'm fully ready for that, you know. I live alone, you know, especially with COVID. I go to work and I come home, so a lot of free time on my hands. I, you know, I, like I said, I always wanted to be involved in the community. And I realize that'll take up a significant amount of free time, and I'm all for that, even if it, even if it means being yelled at because they think I did something wrong.
And then anything in your past that, that you've actually dealt with, any, any similar type of things?
Well, like I said before, you know, I served five years on the Parks and Rec Foundation Board. I've at least spent a lot of time raising money for the community. You know, I've always been involved in, in college. I was involved in different, you know, groups there that, you know, did everything. In fact, at one point, we were Jeremy Rust and Ashley Flukinger and a few other people started a nonprofit to get, give back to the community. And we worked on a few different events there. We were really trying to get involved in J.C.'s, and it just kind of didn't pan out. But like I said, everything, you know, I really want to be involved in the community and just, even if it means a lot of times taking up, I'm all for that.
Sure. Other comments or questions?
I just have one. Since this is, is such an important committee for the city, and as you said, you really haven't ever been to a Planning Commission meeting. If we decide not to put you on the Planning Commission, are you willing to go on any other of our open committee places?
Yes, I would most definitely look at any other openings and see if I can be involved in any way. You know, like I said, my main goal is to just give back to the community and, and make sure that, you know, I help improve the community as much as I can.
I appreciate that very much.
Any other comments or questions before I ask Adam if he has any questions of us?
I'd make one note that if you go back and look without, there's no attending at the moment, I think. They're all virtual like we are, but you can go back and watch the meetings on YouTube. I'm pretty sure they're out there. John can confirm that.
Yeah, I, I would, you know, if you guys appoint me, I would definitely go back and, you know, go over minutes and make sure I'm well-prepared for anything that comes up.
I want to do it, even if we do confirm you, just make sure it's really something you want to do.
You're, you're not always the most popular guy in the room off the Planning Commission because you're making, you're making decisions on how people can and can't use their property.
Yeah, I mean, I work in retail, so you know, I'm used to people being upset at me, so it wouldn't really be anything new to me.
I, I would echo that. I would recommend that you go back and look at a few meetings, no matter what kind of decision or non-decision we make tonight, so that you get a real feel for what's going on. And I think that you can probably look at agendas and work packets online. It's, it, it, I know that it takes a lot of time and research.
Yeah, I, I'm like I said, I will definitely go and do that, you know. It's, you know, I'll definitely, if, whether I'm appointed or not, I'll definitely make sure I'm prepared and, and find new ways to give back to the community, so.
Tom is a former Planning Commissioner. David is a former Planning Commissioner. Made a few comments. Anything you'd like to add?
I'd just like to say that I, it's rewarding as all get out. It's important to figure out how to make decisions in the context of ordinances that we've adopted and planning rules and zoning, but also to think about the long term, about problems that are coming and to know and recognize when they're, when they're, it's time to address them. And we do have big things coming up, you know, with climate change and things like this, population growth. So it's a, it's a pretty comprehensive kind of job.
Yeah.
It's fun to work on.
Yeah.
Adam, any questions you'd like to ask us?
To be honest, I really don't have any questions. I, you know, I just want to say I appreciate all of you taking the time to have a meeting, have an interview with me, and I look forward to hearing your decision.
Okay, well, thank you, Adam. I know that the application process is still open, so there may or may not be a decision this evening, but ultimately there will be, so stay tuned.
All right. Well, thank you guys very much for your time.
Thanks.
Thank you.
With that, I will adjourn the interview, and we'll get ready for our council session at seven.
All right. Have a good night, guys.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm calling to order the Seaside City Council meeting for February 22, 2021. We'll start the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for the pledge. Together, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I'll ask our city clerk to call the roll. Kim?
I will. Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Montero, I'm starting with you tonight.
My goodness, present.
Counselor Pizowski?
Here.
Counsel President Wright?
Here.
Counselor Phillips?
Here.
Counselor Horning?
Here.
Counselor Frank?
Here.
Hi, Randy. Mayor Barber?
Present. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as circulated.
I would like to make a motion prior to that. I would move that item 9A, the presentation regarding seaside downtown parking, be removed from the agenda.
And would you like to state your reasons?
I think in order to have discussion, we have to have a second to that.
I second it.
It's been moved and seconded.
Okay.
Now, now would you like to state your reason?
Yes, I would.
Okay.
Item 9A is a business proposal and sales pitch from an individual who wants to partner with the city to manage the city center, AKA convention center parking lot, as paid parking, and share the revenue in an 80-20 split with the city. According to my research, the city center parking lot was an idea proposed and pursued by the merchants in the late 80s, early 90s, because they needed more parking to provide customer convenience, hoping to result in increased business in the downtown core. The merchants funded half the cost of creating this parking by adding a surcharge to their annual business license fee, which continued for a number of years. Since that time, merchants have repeatedly indicated the need for increased parking in the downtown core. Has this council ever discussed the possibility of making the city parking lot a paid parking lot? Nine years of following city council proceedings and 10 further years on the council tell me that the answer is no. The council has never had any discussion regarding converting the city center parking lot from free to paid parking. In order to make a decision whether to make the city center parking lot into paid parking, the council would normally discuss the reason for such an initiative, discuss the pros and cons of such action, and provide time and place for public input prior to making the decision. If the decision were to turn the lot into paid parking, the city would then consider whether to self-manage or put out an RFP for management. Not having done any of these things, I believe it is inappropriate for the council to now listen to a sales pitch business proposal that infers that such a decision has been made or that such action has even been considered. It would be inappropriate for the council to consider any sales pitch or business proposal for any suggested project that the council had not already decided to pursue. Allowing this business proposal at this time sets precedent, which would allow anyone to make any business proposal at any time for anything. That would not be appropriate, and that is not the way I want to spend my time or the city's time or the council's time. Thus, I am opposed to setting precedent for allowing business proposals to be made to the council for initiatives for which the council has not already decided. I ask that this item be removed from our agenda until such time that we have followed appropriate and due process that determines whether such a proposal is in order.
Thank you, Tita. The floor is open for any discussion on the motion.
My, being on the group that is talking about the downtown parking solutions, when I found out that this was going to be on the agenda, I thought that it was a good opportunity for us to look at possible ideas for a solution and to bring more data to the table so that when that group gets together, they have more information to be able to talk from, whether it was the parking structure, paid parking, non-paid parking, other solutions. And I saw it as an opportunity to gain a data point to bring to those conversations.
Thank you, David. Any other comments?
You know, I, I appreciate the fact that Adam came up with an idea, and it's something new, forward-thinking, and, and has maybe the capability of addressing some issues. But the reason I agree with this is not being where it was located on our agendas is I also don't really want to set a precedent in this way with our procedures and having something not already vetted by council come before us. Normally, we, we are, we have approved something or are searching for it before we have a presentation.
Thank you, Randy. Other comments?
And perhaps it just can go under public comment. I don't know if there's time for that or not.
I have mixed emotions about this. I understand where Tita was coming from, but on the other hand, I agree with David. I like the idea that somebody's come and come forward to us to give us another side of potential ways to take care of our parking issue in the downtown core. So I was looking forward to hearing Adam's presentation. If he needs to move it into public comment, and can you do it, do it in four minutes, Adam? I should say, move it.
So to respond a little bit to what David said, what, the item that I interpreted he was looking at addressing was increasing parking. And this, I don't see that this is something that increases parking, but if we've already set a goal and we have a task group who work on a goal about parking, it seems to me it would be more appropriate to bring this to that task force for them to flesh it out and see what they want to recommend to the council. It feels kind of like bringing something to the council before it goes to the Planning Commission. It, it sort of jumps that over because we, that puts us in the position of considering things before our task force, our goal work, work group even gets to start considering all the data.
I, I understand what you're saying, Tita, and I can see why you see it that way. I also see it as a way of, in the past, when we've proposed parking structures, which of course would possibly be a possibility for increasing parking downtown, we've had issues finding a way to be able to pay for it. And I could see, you know, some sort of a paid parking structure being a way of possibly paying for that and being able to have people see it in the city council meeting would make it a more public way of people understanding than a small task force doing their business behind closed doors.
And this is actually the kind of conversation that I think is inappropriate for us to be having at a council meeting at this time because we're not here to solve the long-term issue without any study. We haven't even studied anything, and those small groups are not behind closed doors. Those are public sessions.
But that, but that study is gathering information, and so I figured that that's what that, this would be.
And that, that's not what I see. I also am very concerned that if we entertain this at this time, we are saying, anybody, you got any idea? You want to do a business proposal and you want to partner with the city? You can get presentation time. I don't see presentation time as a time for people to be making proposals. It's more reports. We get the, the department reports. We get reports from businesses about maybe what's going on with their business. But it's not a time to be setting things out for us to be, to be part of our decision process. We haven't even started the discussion, so.
I'm going to move pretty quickly here to a vote on the motion on the floor. Anybody else have a final word before we vote?
I'll put two cents in. I think this is okay because it's under presentation. We're not going to vote on anything tonight. There's never a plan to do that. It's simply information. And we have done things in the past. We listened to, one of the first council meetings, I think I was at, we listened to somebody that wanted to be able to have chickens in the city and had her own little business and said, you know, we can do this and have chicken. So I think, you know, we have room to do that kind of thing. But it's probably only going to happen if it's something that pertains to something that we are concerned about. We're obviously concerned about parking.
Any other comments? So you understand the motion is to remove item number nine from the agenda. So your vote on the, if you agree with that motion, your vote would be yes. If you disagree with that motion, your vote would be no. Are we clear?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
It's 9A. That is your motion, not nine.
Oh, thank you very much for that.
I don't want Dale taking off the agenda.
We won't, we won't give him that out. Thank you for that clarification. Okay. Did I hear another voice? I will, at this point then, ask the city clerk to do a roll call vote.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Montero?
Yes.
Counselor Pizowski?
No.
Counsel President Wright?
No.
Counselor Phillips?
No.
Counselor Horning?
No.
Counselor Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Barber?
No.
Two yeses and five nos.
Okay. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the agenda as before us. I guess it wasn't amended, yeah.
I saw move.
Is there a second? Okay, we got two or three seconds. Do, please, Dana, please, Dana, excuse me. Kim, please do a roll call vote.
I will, yes. Thank you. Counselor Montero?
Uh, yes.
Counselor Pizowski?
Yes.
Counsel President Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Phillips? Counselor Horning?
Yes.
Counselor Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Barber?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So at this point, we have a proclamation, Career and Technical Education Month, and the Counselor Pizowski is going to read that proclamation for us this evening.
Not much. I know I have that proclamation here.
In your packet.
Yep. There we go.
Yeah.
All right. City of Seaside Proclamation. Whereas February 1st to 28th, 2021 has been designated Career and Technical Education Month by the Association for Career and Technical Education. And whereas career and technical education offers students the opportunity to gain the academic, technical, and employability skills necessary for true career readiness. And whereas students in career and technical education programs participate in authentic, meaningful experiences that improve the quality of their education and increase their engagement and achievement. And whereas career and technical education at community colleges will prepare Oregonians to return to work as Oregon's economy recovers from COVID-19 and wildfire devastation. And whereas Oregon's community colleges will serve critical roles in the state's economic recovery from COVID-19 and wildfires, particularly in assisting system, systemically marginalized Oregonians who have been most adversely affected by these challenges. And whereas leaders from business and industry nationwide report increasing challenges to addressing the skills gap and connecting qualified professionals with available careers in critical and growing CTE-related fields, including healthcare, energy, advanced manufacturing, transportation, and information technology. And whereas career and technical education programs ensure the employers have access to qualified and thriving workforce, ensuring Oregon has a strong and competitive economy. Now therefore, I, Jay Barber, Mayor of the City of Seaside in the state of Oregon, do hereby proclaim the week of February 1st to 28th, 2021 as Career and Technical Education Month. And be it further resolved that the council encourages all citizens to become familiar with the services and benefits offered by the career and technical education programs at Clatsay Community College and to support and participate in these programs to enhance individual skills and productivity and to help Oregon's economy thrive again.
Thank you, David. Good proclamation. I'm going to read a statement regarding how the council is handling public comments during the digital meetings. It's a little lengthy, so please be patient. If you are online attending the meeting through the Zoom software, raise your hand by clicking on the control panel at the bottom of your screen. You will then be placed into a queue where, when your time comes to speak, you will be unmuted and can address the council on matters not already on tonight's agenda. If you have a comment related to an agenda item that has a public comment period, please wait for that item to be addressed, to address the council. If you are attending the meeting by phone and have dialed in, you will need to press star nine to raise your hand. As with the online attendees, this will place you into a queue, and you will be able to speak once called upon. In both instances, public meeting law asks that you state your full name and your address to the public, for the public record, as you would do so if you were attending the meeting in person. You will be limited to four minutes of total speaking time, as is also standard protocol for our meetings. So at this time, I'll open the floor to anyone who would like to address the council on any item not on the agenda. John, let us know if there's anybody waiting to make a comment.
Don't have any hands raised, Mr. Mayor. I don't know how long you want to wait. If you want to give it about 10, 15, 20 seconds?
Yeah, let's wait a little while. We're looking forward to going back. We're looking forward to going back to in-fa- in-person meetings so that we have a little more opportunity for that. We'll talk about that at the end of the meeting tonight.
Still nothing, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, with that, I will close the, uh, public comment segment of our agenda and ask the council if anyone has, uh, need to declare a potential conflict of interest.
No.
I don't, I don't hear anybody indicating, so we'll move on from that. And then I'll entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Uh, those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed the same, the motion carries. You'll notice that we spent a lot of money in that consent agenda. It's because.
Over a million.
We didn't, uh, meet, uh, earlier in the, uh, month, so that's, explains that expenditure. Now we have, uh, reports and presentations.
Do you want a roll call, Mayor?
Oh, sorry.
No, that's all right.
Thank you for reminding me. Yes, we do want a roll call to approve that.
I was ready. Counselor Montero?
For the consent agenda.
Yes. Counselor Pazowski?
Yes.
Council President Wright?
Yes.
I was gonna say, where'd you go? Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Counselor Horning?
Yes.
Counselor Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Barber?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're muted.
Who was muted?
Tita, yes.
Oh, Tita, okay. We saw your lips move when you said yes, Tita. Okay. Uh, now the presentation of Seaside Downtown Parking, Adam. We're hoping you can do this in about ten minutes. Is that a possibility? Okay, you have the floor.
Can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, John, do you have some, the slides up?
Yep, one second.
Okay. First, I'll just, uh, introduce myself really quick. Uh, my name's Adam Israel, uh, born and raised here in Seaside, went to high school here, um, graduated college, moved back home, uh, ran the human beings, owned them for about twelve years, um, coached, coached a lot of sports around the area. Do a lot of things for community, run a lot of fundraiser programs. Um, the presentation I'm about to give you guys is something that I'm actually doing as a passion project of mine. I'm, um, currently doing it downtown at, um, next to the Elks and I'm actually utilizing, um, this parking solution for the Elks as well to, uh, uh, give them revenue throughout the years. And so I thought this, this would be something that, um, would help, help benefit our town. And so I just got some numbers and some, uh, some ideas and some things that I wanted to run by. I've already spoken with quite a few people in town, um, fire chief, police chief, uh, other members of the community, um, just to get feedback on this. And, um, uh, it's been pretty positive so far. So I just kinda wanna run, run through it with you guys. I'm not gonna read it verbatim. I'm just gonna kinda hit some of the highlights and then my proposal. So, um, you know, paid parking has been something that's been going on for a long time in a lot of areas. Um, you know, I've been working with Pat, the Passport Company. They're, they're a nationwide company that, uh, offers this parking solution. It's, um, you know, it's app-based and it's, it's done about ninety-five percent of towns on the East Coast utilize this just to help with, you know, tourist influx and, you know, strain on the local economy and, um, you know, the, the nice part about this with technology these days, we wouldn't even be having this conversation fifteen years ago because the technology really didn't exist and we'd be looking at putting in meters. And that's not very cost-effective. So, um, you know, this is, I'm implementing this currently in my, um, forty-plus space parking lot downtown. Um, and I think that'll be a good case for illustrating the demand for, you know, parking in Seaside and then that, or, you know, that lot can actually accommodate paid parking. Um, my proposal is just, you know, mainly give you guys information, but, you know, looking at managing your two hundred and twenty-five space parking lot adjacent to the convention center, um, I think this would be a great sample size for you guys. Um, I'll just, just run some numbers through it with you guys. Um, the total space count's about two hundred and twenty-five spaces. Um, you know, I'd be looking, you know, obviously this is all things that we can discuss in the city. Um, but this is just ideas that I have had and feedback that I've gotten, timeframe, just living here and owning businesses and go, you know, being downtown. Um, looking at the paid parking season, you know, kind of like our tourist season, March first to October thirty-first, uh, about eight months, you know, this paid, paid parking is, is something we realized that all the tourists that are coming to our town, this is disposable income for them. And, you know, a lot of these, these tourists, they're used to, um, paying to park just to simply go to work. So this is not something new. And I, I talked to, you know, Brian Owens of The Chamber. He says he gets a lot of people every single week that come in and say, you know, what do we pay for parking? And, cause, you know, we don't charge for parking. So, um, I'd be looking at, you know, somewhere between a dollar an hour on the weekdays, Monday through Thursday, uh, Friday to Sunday, two dollars an hour. Hours enforcement between eight and nine P M., which is all adjustable. Um, big thing for, for what I was looking at for the city is a lot of revenue potential just on this one parking space, uh, parking location. This is something that, you know, I, I view this lot just being downtown a lot. And this is where a lot of, you know, day trippers will come down and they will, they will park here and they will hit the beach immediately for six, seven, eight hours and then they will, you know, you know, leave their, leave their garbage in the, in the garbage cans and then take off and, and head out of town. I don't foresee these as a lot of people that are, you know, doing a lot of, uh, consuming downtown and, you know, going to restaurants and doing that. There are some of those, obviously, but we've all seen the minivans load up with the kids and the dogs. So, you know, looking at the potential revenue for something like this for the city, um, you can read the sheet just as well as I can. You know, the weekend, the weekday revenue potential is somewhere around twenty-three hundred dollars a day, eighty percent capacity. Um, weekend, as we know, weekends are very busy around here, especially in the summers and even, you know, well, not in the summers now, uh, but you're looking around fifty-two hundred a day, potentially around fifteen thousand for the weekend. And that's assuming average of ninety percent capacity. Um, I mean, that's a total potential weekly revenue over the thirty-four weeks of our paid to parking season of around twenty-five thousand a week. Um, that's potential gross revenue around eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars for the city. Um, you know, and I, I, I just threw this in last minute because I was looking at potentially doing November through February, free parking the entire time. But as we, as, as we all know, weekends are extremely busy even during a pandemic down here. Um, we could look at adding, you know, four months of weekends and that's another potential two hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars worth of revenue for the city. Um, management fee, that's pretty much an industry standard management fee, which is all negotiable. That's not really something that I want to talk about right now, but that's something that obviously we can discuss. But this is be a full, my, my company would do everything. They would do the enforcement. They would do, you know, the striping. They would do it all. Next slide, John. Um, so I mean, the potential revenue for Seaside with utilize all the months is almost close to nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, the thing I like about these funds, um, they are unrestricted funds. They can go towards anything. Um, I mean, I have a long-term, the, the reason for this is because I know as well as the rest of you know, when we get a big influx in tourists and they run out of parking, they go out to the neighborhoods. And I'm sure there's a lot of cars that are blocking, blocking, you know, neighborhoods, they're blocking driveways. There's a lot of probably calls on that. We can't go out, so I was thinking we should go up. Um, you know, the proceeds for this could go to construct a second and third level parking structure slash, you saw, sit on the evacuation garage downtown, uh, which would add, you know, anywhere from two hundred and fifty to five hundred additional spaces downtown. Pull those people out of those neighborhoods, get them downtown. Um, as you can see, uh, another option that I thought of for some of these funds could be to take percentages and go towards the fire department, go towards the police department. Fire department could use it for a couple additional, um, you know, positions, you know, we don't have a paid, we don't have a position right now for parking enforcement for all the other parking downtown. That could be a solution. Um, as you see, there's, there's my signage right there for my current lot, Seaside Park and Pay. Um, we use this app called Passport. If you want to go to the next slide or scroll down there, John. Um, the nice thing about the Passport app is we don't have to use a kiosk. It's, it's all done by, by the phone. Um, you know, there's, there's no, uh, huge upfront costs out of the city. It would all be, all be for me. Um, here in a second of how it works, but it's, it's very quick, it's secure. Uh, there's no more having to run and fill the meters up. Um, they get alerts when the parking session is about to end. Um, they can add time directly to it from their phone. So if there's a wait at dinner, they don't have to run back. They can simply do that. Um, they get, you know, email receipts. Um, there's, there's a lot of solutions for this. And even when it comes to the business community downtown, if we wanted to supply free parking for the employees downtown, we still can certainly do that with this app. Just give them codes. Um, I don't want to dive too much into that, but there is solutions for that. Um, and, I mean, it's very easy. They pull in, they see the sign, they download the app, pick the amount of time they want to park and away they go. So why don't we show a couple of these videos here real quick? John, just to kinda show just a little bit of, uh, info on the, uh, on the app and how it works and how simple it is to utilize. Was there any volume on that? Can anybody hear it?
Didn't hear it, no.
Oh, wow.
How about the next video? Are we gonna get any, any, um, sound on the next video, John?
It should have worked, Adam. I'm not sure. I, I used the share feature on the audio, so we'll give it a shot.
Okay, well, if we don't get any audio on this one, we can pretty much stop it because it's just, the audio is the most important thing on it.
You could also narrate over the top of it if you'd like, but, um.
Sure.
I'll give it a shot. I'm, I'm using it as it's instructed here. So here we go.
Okay.
I'm gonna guess that the audio's not gonna work, but I'm gonna go ahead and play it. Here we go.
Okay. So basically just download the Passport app to your phone. Click on the app. Go down, select new session. The zone will automatically come up in the area. Mine's five oh three oh one over at my lot. Select the zone. You select the space number. Uh, you can do space numbers or you can even do, um, license plates. Simply select the time that you want to use, how many hours you'd like to utilize. Go till, let's say, seven P M. We can go to dinner. Click continue. Then it brings up the details. Lot one, space number, zone number, and time at six thirty-six. Parking fees, twelve dollars. If you have a validation code, uh, such as if a business wanted to, uh, validate parking, they could enter that. If you have employees that want to park for free, that's where you put their code in. It's all set up on the back office. You input your Visa card, Visa, MasterCard, they're using PayPal, a couple of different ones. Click that and there you go. And if you ever want to utilize, add some more time to it. Simply just click on add time and you can select how much time you'd like. Uh, the nice thing about this app as well and, uh, is that right before the app expires, how it works is the app will send you a notification or a text message saying, hey, your time is gonna expire in fifteen minutes. Would you like to extend that? So it's very easy, very user-friendly. Um, I think Sam from Passport was on the call initially, but he works with a lot of municipalities around the United States that utilize this. Uh, it's a very, very well-known technology. Um, so those are just some of the basic details on it. Like I said, I didn't want to just have everybody drinking from a fire hose. But, um, if you want to bring up that last slide, um, I have a pilot program proposal. This is something obviously that we could, you know, chat about later. It's not a sales pitch. It's just simply information and kinda opening some eyes to what we could utilize these funds for. What I would like to propose at some point is just to go live on the two hundred and twenty-five parking spaces from May to October. Uh, the total potential revenue for the city, uh, is somewhere around five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars. Um, now what this does, instead of doing the parking study or spending money on this, because I know there's been some that have been done in the past, this allows us to take a sample size, collect data on the parking activity during busy months. Um, we can adjust rates according to busy times of demand. Uh, more importantly, get feedback from paid to park users in the community, see how the community likes it. Um, you know, collect data from user calls. If some of the people don't have cell phones, determine if we need to put a kiosk in long-term at the site because those are, those upfront costs with those. Um, you can work on our enforcement methods as well, which is something that my company will handle all of. Um, nice thing is you could drive additional revenue during this short time. They could utilize for COVID-related recovery and general revenue recovery for the city. Um, there will be no upfront and ongoing cost to the city of Seaside for the pilot program. And since that parking pay would fully manage the parking and the enforcement. So, um, that's essentially the entire presentation cut down a little bit, so it's only ten minutes. Um, but I just wanted to give you guys, you know, this is something that I'm, that I'm obviously doing on my own and I thought it'd be a great fit, a great solution for downtown. Long-term goal would be to raise enough funds to build a second or even third level parking structure, run the program for a few years. Um, and then utilize those funds to, uh, you know, pay for that parking structure and, and help with a long-term solution.
Well, thank you, Adam. Uh, very informative. Um, as we begin to move in that direction, if the council makes that determination, uh, your resource will be very valuable in that process. So, uh, at this point, uh, we have your presentation and even your proposal. And we'll make sure that goes before the goal group that'll be working on this. Um, yeah. With that, uh, I think we've used up your time. You used it well and, uh, I think we'll move on. Thank you.
Good job, Adam.
Thanks, Adam.
I appreciate you guys giving me the opportunity to present this. If, if you have any questions at any time, uh, you're more than welcome to reach out to me. And thanks, thanks once again.
Good. We know where to find you.
Yeah, exactly.
Thank, thank you, Adam. Take care.
Yeah.
Moving on to item nine B, as, uh, our city manager pointed out, uh, report from our, uh, Public Works Director, Dale, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council members. Uh, as you know, uh, this last year, twenty twenty, was definitely a roller coaster for every city in the United States and around the world. So we did the best we could do with what we had to work with. So in your packets, you know, we'll start out first, what is Public Works? And basically, um, I know Mark thinks that he runs the city, but we basically do for him and for you. We make sure that your infrastructure is up and running, that when people turn a faucet on, they've got water. And when they have to use the restroom, they could flush a toilet, drive down the streets and, you know, basically enjoy Seaside, whether they're visiting or living here. So we take care of the wastewater system, the water treatment and distribution, all the storm drainage, uh, the streets, roads, bridges, signage, lighting. Uh, we maintain all of our city parks. We maintain our public restrooms. Uh, we maintain the Seaside Municipal Airport along with members of our Airport Committee who have also joined in with us and do mowing and maintenance out there. They do an awesome job. Uh, we're very pleased and proud to have them on board with us. Uh, we maintain the Evergreen Cemetery. Uh, so you'll see I put in select building maintenance and that's because we only maintain a couple of the buildings because, uh, like the Seaside Library, Esther maintains that. Russ takes care of his convention center and so forth. Um, and Chief Daniels, of course, the fire station. Uh, we do give the police help when, anytime that they need it. Uh, we also have the fleet maintenance and we have, uh, we deal with engineering. So our employees of the, uh, Public Works this year changed just a tad bit. This year, um, when the convention center had to close due to COVID nineteen restrictions, we use their employees as some of our summer help, we'll call it. So in wastewater treatment with Tony Beimont is our foreman still. Uh, we had Brian Lawson. He's our Assistant Wastewater Treatment Plan Operator. George Whitlock, Matt Miller, Walter Mills and Nick McKenzie. Now Walter and Nick normally work at the convention center, but we were able to do some cross-training, have them come to work for us in Public Works and keep them busy. In our water treatment, Mike Demme, our foreman, uh, Ron Warner is a, our Assistant Water Treatment Plan Operator. Kevin Nagels, our Backflow Specialist, uh, Brandon or Scott Hanna, and then Matt Kiefer. And then we lost Matt Kiefer. He went over to the fire station to give them a hand. So he's been gone a while for us. In the street department, Jeremy Strimples is our foreman, uh, Matt Long, Ashlyn Simla. Ashlyn, again, was from the, uh, Convention Center and came to work for us full-time in the street department. Uh, Nathan Kerwin, Darlene Peters from Brown, our street sweeper, uh, Caesar Alcala and Frank Cam. Now Caesar also went to the fire department. He worked over there for the year. And then Frank is from the Convention Center. So again, we were jockeying around employees uh, with the help of, uh, Russ Vandenberg and, uh, Mark McStanley and John Rail giving us a hand with us. Stephen Keever took the new position of our mechanic as Terry retired, Terry Bush. And then engineering this year, we started out with Jeff Liljumall, Alvin Harwood. Uh, and I'll throw these names in, Celeste Kennely and Jennifer Beimont. Again, two people from the Convention Center. They came over to help me after we closed the, uh, engineering portion of our, uh, our Public Works Department. We did a lot of archiving, filing and, uh, just basic paperwork in our office. And it was a great pleasure to have, uh, the help from both Celeste and Jennifer. Next slide, please. So some of our additional responsibilities that we have each year is we, uh, manage the Downtown Litter Maintenance Contract. Uh, the performance for that, the Downtown Land, Landscape Maintenance Contract, which was renewed, uh, just recently with Nature's Helper. Uh, the City of Seaside Safety Committee Team Limber, uh, excuse me, Team Leader. Um, the Seaside Municipal Airport Manager, Evergreen Cemetery Manager, and then the Watershed Protection and Maintenance. So we have a, we have a pretty busy schedule all the time. We also serve on the Parks Advisory Committee. We have a great group of people there. Uh, Transmit, Transportation Advisory Commission, again, a very active board. Uh, the City Tree Board, the Seaside Municipal Airport Committee, uh, the SDDA Downtown Transportation and Beautification Committees. This year, they weren't very active because we couldn't meet. Uh, we did communicate via emails and try to keep, uh, in touch with each other. So we had a couple of big projects this year. Uh, the Capital Improvement Project, the East Hills Reservoir and Booster Pump Station. Some pictures here of the Booster Pump Station, the inside workings of it, uh, and the water reservoir, uh, from the foundation to the final product. Uh, this feeds the whole East Hill side, the Sunset Hills. It provides fire protection for the new school campus. Um, and it gives us a total of about eight and a half million gallons of water, which, uh, is a very nice storage to have. While we were doing that, we didn't have enough on our plate, so we went ahead and took on a few blocks of Holiday Drive, First Avenue to C, which was, uh, reconstruction of that area. Um, a lot of it is, is again, what we've been doing over the last year, few years, is taking all of the overhead wires, putting them underground, uh, new sidewalks, crosswalks. Uh, new, this one ended up with a new water main and a new force main, and then new asphalt paving. Thankfully enough to COVID-19, we were able to get this done as quick as we could, uh, without too much interruption. We did have some businesses that, uh, you know, John was very, um, he was one of our main people in working with the communication on this. We were trying to work with all these businesses, keep the roads open. The nice thing about it with COVID-19, we didn't have all the pedestrians, which was a little bit on the nice side. Those are the ones that we really have to worry about. The cars don't bother us so much. Uh, but again, John was a great help in communicating, getting emails out, getting the schedule out to all the business members. Uh, we even went door-to-door as well. And while we were doing that, we took on the turnaround. We had quite a bit of water leakage inside the restrooms of the turnaround, both restrooms. And we went in first. That center picture is where we started epoxying the ceiling to fill in the cracks. You know, this is a hundred-year-old structure that was built for Model Ts. Uh, and now we take our big fire truck around it. So we wanted to epoxy those cracks in. Once we started epoxying those in, and it came up outside, up on the plaza itself, we started looking at the walls and discovering where the water was coming from in the walls, uh, because we would actually have water intrude through the wall, come in and land on the floor, and it was always bringing sand, and, and we didn't, we were concerned that we would break it down to some, to a certain point, and we would have a failure on one of the walls. So we injected, you see this, uh, picture kinda to the top right, all those little holes that were drilled in there. A high-pressure injection gun with epoxy is put into every single one of those holes, and the void in the background is all filled full of this epoxy, is strengthening the wall. We took it down to bare concrete. We're talking 1921. Uh, we could see where they had some failure in the wall in the beginning. When they first poured it, their forms blew out. We found some wood inside the wall itself that's on the outside from their forms. We found square rebar that was poking out. Um, we took all of that down to the bare, um, 1921, and then rebuilt it back, and then the bottom-right picture is the finished product. So we're very pleased this thing should last forever, and it's, uh, obviously historical site.
At least another hundred years.
At least a good hundred years, yeah. As we're going through, uh, the summer, we had a water line, the, the top-right picture or top-left picture there is the water line that was exposed from this last winter. So with that, uh, we going, went through all the permit process with Department of State Lands, Fish and Wildlife, and we added the revetment back again, uh, completing this sidewall itself and keeping that, uh, water main protected. At the same time, we have to have that rock wall at a specific slope so that we don't cause a washout of, or erosion on the beach on the other side of the river. And what we've learned with this slope is that we're actually building the berm up on the other side. We're actually restoring their beach that they used to have, um, and it's working very well. Then we did a few small projects. Uh, we did a water line replacement over at, at the Thompson Falls Bridge Crossing. Um, we did the replacement of the dock and the dock lighting at Quatap Park. The Second Avenue Columbia to Downing, we did new curbing and sidewalk. Uh, we had finished this sanitary sewer the year before. Then we went over to Queen, uh, and Wahana Road. We have always had some tree problems there with RVs coming down as they're trying to get into Trails, um, Thousand Trails Campground. Goodman Park, uh, we completed the Salmon Mosaic Bronze Memorial Plaque in our, with our Parks District, our Parks members. Uh, we had a little celebration out there. Councilor Horning was there that night with us, along with the artist that, uh, kinda helped put all this together, Mike Hinton. Um, Goodman Park, or excuse me, Seaside Police Department, we built a new detective office for them. We, uh, changed their storage inside the building, and they now have, uh, a new office where three detectives can work once COVID-19 is out of there. Two of them can be in there at the same time as it is. Broadway Park, we put in new irrigation, ADA sidewalks, and new landscaping, so it's a lot of lawn. Uh, up on Tillamook Head, the removal of the old booster pump station, and then some landscaping there. The City Hall Lobby remodel, that was a Terry Douglas design. He designed the, um, City Hall a couple of years ago. He also designed the, uh, Seaside Police Department's new detective office. So I wanna make sure I give him kudos on that. We're continuing to use his designs. Uh, Broadway, we finished all four pergolas. Cooper Street, we did removal of the booster pump station because of the East Hills Reservoir, and then we re-landscape that corner. We've had a lot of great comments on how that turned out from neighbors. And continuation of our water meter replacement program, that's to capture all the water that goes through, due to low-flow toilets and, uh, faucets. And continuation of our street signage, uh, throughout the city, so we're still working on that, making as many signs as we can. We do end up buying some because it's cheaper for us to buy a few than it is to make all of them. And then Evergreen Cemetery, Find a Grave, uh, 81% of our graves are now photographed and database, and we're continuing, our volunteers are continuing to work on that. So we're working on some compliance projects, our, our Water Master Plan update. The last plan was updated in 2004, so we're trying to have it done here in, uh, 2022. And then the newest that came out just this last year, and it's an act of 2018, but the government just sent us the notification, is the AWA Risk and Resilience Assessment and Emergency Response Plan. It's basically America's Water Infrastructure Act of 2018. And then our Safe Routes to Schools Sidewalk Development Program. We're developing a program to get grant monies to start replacing sidewalks within one miles of our schools. This year, our statistics, uh, we basically, 557 million gallons of sewage was processed into 154 tons of Class A material, which fertilized local hay fields in the Astoria and Lewis and Clark area. This is our Class A material, uh, that can be put basically anyplace. We use it in our own parks for a fertilizer. We only have to put it down once a year to keep the parks nice and green. In our water treatment, uh, we treated 427 million gallons, um, in 2020. Uh, 3,794 water meters are what we have, uh, in this city. We have 43 miles of distribution pipeline throughout the city and the portion of Highway 101 and US 26 via gravity flow and the help of our booster stations. And our finished water storage reservoir is Royal View, which is, as you know, is on the north end of town. The Peterson Point, the south end, and then our new East Hills Reservoir. Our capacity is 8.5 million gallons. Uh, it's not unusual on a very busy weekend such as, uh, Hood to Coast, if we had a volleyball, or a, uh, Fourth of July to go through three and a half, close to four million gallons in one day. So having the additional water is very important to us. So looking to the near future, uh, as you are all aware, uh, our watershed bridge replacement project will be coming out to bid fairly soon. We'll continue, uh, and are continuing the downtown lighting retrofit from the, uh, high-pressure sodium bulbs to LEDs, and also our downtown traffic light retrofits. We've got two, uh, traffic lights in our office right now, getting ready to be put in downtown. Uh, upgrade the remaining electrical pedestal's downtown to stainless steel. Uh, since we've replaced those, we haven't had any issues, uh, with any shorts or lack of power because there's no water intrusion in these new ones. Continuation of the sidewalk infill and ADA crosswalk program. We're currently doing some sidewalks up on Spruce Drive, some corners at Jeffrey Court and Alder. Uh, we should be done with that in the next couple of weeks pending rain. Uh, continuation of cracked ceiling streets to preserve them as long as we can. I was reading off that. Sorry about that, John. Uh, continue to expand our, and our recycle, reuse, and refurbish program. We're going to be helping the city, uh, Police Department remodel their Police Department squad room. Again, that's a Terry Douglas design. Uh, standardize all of our no-outlet streets or the end-of-road streets, especially along the Niwana, trying to reduce the amount of garbage that gets left at the end of streets. Uh, City Hall, we plan on doing their tree replacement and lawn subsurface drainage system here shortly. And City Hall entry remodel of three entrances. We have the materials. I purchased it, uh, last year. We just been kinda busy doing a couple of other things. And then our US 101 Avenue A to Avenue K reconstruction comes out to bid in October. Uh, that's a $7.6 million project through the Oregon Department of Transportation. We'll have the construction of Goodman Park Picnic Shelter this year, and the installation of the memorial bricks at Broadway Park Entry Plaza. We have the sample bricks back now from the engraver, and we'll be ordering those that were sold years ago and getting that walkway started so that we can open it back up for future sales. And nice picture from Randall Henderson. This was, uh, one that he took from his plane. So thank you very much, and I'll answer any questions you'd like.
Well, Dale, thank you so much for an exhausting, exhaustive report. So much information, and wow. Uh, I'm sure there are gonna be some comments from the council or, or questions. I'll open the floor to the council to make any comments.
I just went, when I opened my packet and I looked through this, I thought, oh my God, you made me exhausted, just what, what you've accomplished in your team over this last year. Well done. Kudos.
You're here.
It was very important to keep the crews busy, and also a lot of the projects we did, they didn't have to be within six feet of each other. We were trying to keep the COVID rules.
Wow.
Now, that would be a challenge.
You, uh, mentioned that, uh, you're replacing water meters. How far along is that project?
We're about 30% right now. Um, I did get a bid to, for a company to come in and do it, and they wanted a little over a million dollars to do it. We thought we could do it in-house ourselves. It could take us a couple of years, but that's okay.
I was surprised they showed up in my house one day and they were done in 10 minutes.
It doesn't take that long, yeah.
It takes long. I haven't gotten a new bill since then. Am I gonna be surprised?
Potentially could be, but, uh, you've got Mark's number.
That's right. Um, also wanted to, uh, a conversation I had with, uh, Dale about, uh, there was, uh, some news. It's been about a month ago now about water plant in Florida being hacked, and possibly some, uh, dangerous chemicals dumped in the water. I asked Dale about it. He says there's no way that could happen here, or it'd be very, very difficult. Uh, Dale, you wanna address that?
Right. Well, first off, in order to get into our status system, it's a double password. There's only three people that have it. Um, each of ours is different, so we don't use the same passwords. So someone would have to be able to hack through both of them. Um, you know, I'm not gonna tell you anything about the passwords or what they consist of.
And then, just the, the trust that I think we have with you, knowing that you're running everything, uh, top-notch and, uh, protected.
Right, and we do use game cameras. We do use game cameras up at our, uh, intake, so there are some game cameras. In fact, I cleaned it out today, and it's going back up again tomorrow. So that, you know, we wanna know who's up in our watershed. You know, they are allowed to hunt up there when it's hunting season. Um, but other than that, there shouldn't really be anybody up there other than our, our partners, Oregon Department of Forestry, Fish and Wildlife and that, that, you know, we're teamed up with. So we, we keep a very close eye on that.
You know, the way, um, human nature, nature works is you only hear from people when there's something wrong or they have a complaint, as opposed to you did something right or something's working well. And with all of the things that the Public Works Department does and the people who work in the Public Works Department to support and our city and to keep our city running, and most of it really is invisible to most of us. Things just keep running along and everything's fine, but people don't realize how much work it takes for them to run along and keep fine and that kind of thing. So kudos to you, your department, all the staff who works for you for, um, basically keeping people from calling us with complaints and for keeping our city rolling along.
Well, yeah, well said, Tina.
Uh, great job, Dale, and, um, especially want to, um, bring up the issue of the prom and the turnaround. Uh, we're celebrating our 100th year, of course, but, you know, this has been many, many years of repairs and refurbishing and, uh, paint and, um, just the, the fact that you started in on the turnaround and, and there were all these unforeseen problems, you know, you thought, uh, that, that led to more discovery and, uh, maybe putting some pieces together with history even, and, and getting that job done. That was, that was sort of a big deal, and it seems like everything else just continued along and it got done. And, uh, a lot of, a lot of stuff in this, in our city happens that way because, uh, of your direction and your staff. So once again, I think, uh, we all really appreciate, uh, the job that's done there.
Thank you.
Yeah, I, I am so impressed with the breadth of projects that Dale has to manage. You know, from stuff with the streets and changing, you know, getting the electrical underground to the sewer projects to water to, I mean, there's just, to keep as many projects rolling as that department accomplishes is just amazing.
Dale, remind us, uh, how many years have you been in your role in Public Works?
Uh, just over five years, Mayor, here with the City of Seaside.
Wow, wow. Well, as we look back over those five years, uh, we have come a long way during that period of time, and the council, and I know, Mark, you agree with this, uh, it's because of your leadership that, uh, we've accomplished this, and so kudos from us. And appreciate it. Mark, maybe you have a comment you'd like to make?
Uh, well, Mr. Mayor, I, we are very, very lucky to have Dale as Public Works Director. Uh, and not only Dale, but we have some very, very good people that work down in Public Works. Uh, I know that the foremans of the Street Department, Water Department, and Sewer Department, uh, they do a great job too and have a great deal of experience. Uh, and we're really lucky to have those people, so, um, you know, uh, yes. We're very, very proud of the Public Works Department in Seaside, and, um, and I think the council and the community have every right to be very proud of them. We get a lot done, um, and we, uh, manage to do it within the budgets that they have. Um, and we uh managed to do it within the budgets that they have we uh currently run.
Great. You know, the other comment I wanted to make is that to be able to retain highly qualified staff during a pandemic by shift shifting them around to other departments was ingenious. I I'm so glad you're able to use those resources in public works that wouldn't have been used at the convention center, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, that that shows good management as well. That was excellent.
Well, I I don't know if Russ Vanderburg would agree with you since he lost two of his employees to me full-time, but that that's another day, another story.
Well, I'm sure he'll feel that it's in the same family at least, so that's good. Well, thank you again, Dale. Uh, excellent report, and the people listening want a copy of this report, uh, it'll be uh in our on the Facebook, um, on our website, so uh tune in. It's an excellent report. And that the last picture, I'm just marveling at it that uh Randy took uh of the airport approach. Uh, what a beautiful shot that is. And uh I have a friend that's a a recent pilot and I'm gonna send that to him and say, look, here's where you can come to Seaside, so good. Well, thank you, and with that, we'll move on to the next item of unfinished business. We have vacancies in our Transportation Advisory Commission, our Planning Commission, our Library Board and Community Center Commission. No applications that I know of for the uh Transportation Advisory Committee. We have done uh an interview for the opening on the the Planning Commission. And we have left that application period open. I don't know whether the council wants to make any decision tonight on the applicant that we heard tonight, or do we want to leave that open for now? What is the?
I had proposed that we leave it open with uh two more weeks. Well, until a week from Friday, let's say, and then close it for good.
Okay, council agreed with that?
I support.
Yes.
Good. Good. Okay, that doesn't need a motion. We'll just note that that we'll leave it open during that time. Uh, we do have two applicants for the Library Board. And I'm, uh, yes.
I only saw one.
I only saw one.
Uh, one, Kim sent one out.
I emailed one out, y'all.
Late today, yeah.
This one.
There are both of them in that email, I believe.
Yeah. And I'm possibly going to have one more coming, just so you know that um next day or so, just let you know.
Okay, uh, should we set up uh some interviews for those folks uh in the near future?
Sure.
Uh, the typical process is to nominate and then interview. Uh, you don't have uh if you didn't get that email, if anybody has the names or can, maybe you could help us with the two names.
One is Marilyn Bailey.
Yes.
The other is Cheryl Adams, check.
I'll entertain a motion to nominate those so we can interview them.
Go move.
Okay, so move. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded that we nominate those for uh the interview process. Uh, Kim, do we need to do a roll call vote on that, or can I just ask for a vote, a voice?
You're fine, Mayor.
Okay, those in favor of the motion to nominate those two uh applicants signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose the same, the motion carries.
Real quick, Mayor.
Yes.
On that, uh, council writes um move to hold the application open period. You said a week from Friday, so the official date of that closure, you're requesting be March fifth. Is that accurate? So we'll accept applications here at City Hall until March fifth?
That'll be just before our next council meeting, right?
It's correct.
Yes.
Um, yeah, but I have to.
That's pretty quick.
If I get an application on Friday, then how am I, am I going to go ahead and set that person up for an interview automatically?
Perhaps we should go two weeks longer.
Or even the Wednesday before the Friday, have like Wednesday at five be the deadline. So then you have all the information in your packet and I can have an interview set up.
If anybody even does it, yeah. On March third, that's fine.
Yeah, that gives you a little more leave time that way.
Thank you.
March third, then, uh, you got that, John?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I need to um preface the fact that we are going, I know for a fact that we're gonna lose at least three more of our uh com- uh Community Center Commissioners this coming year. So I'll need to put our little heads up with people. That means four potential spots.
And that's such an important commission, all of them are, of course, but that one.
This commission has worked really hard, but because of moving and age and whatever else, they're um not gonna be available.
Yeah, I was thinking um our applicant tonight, if if we determine not to appoint him to the Planning Commission, that might be a spot for him as well. We get some younger people involved in that, that'd be great, yeah. Okay, um, we have a bid from uh HVAC Services and Maintenance, the Maintenance Project. Mark, do you wanna make any comments on that?
Well, Mr. Mayor, the city went out to bid for uh HVAC services. Uh, this company uh would be the company that maintains uh all the HVAC systems for all the different buildings in the city. Uh, this is the general maintenance of these HVAC systems, so they change all the filters, they make sure the systems are running properly. Uh, but if one of them breaks down, this is all, these people are also the ones we call uh to go ahead and fix whatever problems. Like it wasn't that long ago uh that the HVAC system in City Hall started leaking into my uh office and um uh, we made a quick call to uh the HVAC people and they came out and solved that problem, thankfully. Uh, anyway, uh, we have one bid. Uh, I think that every HVAC company uh in the county at one time or another has had this contract. It's not a very big contract, um, but we have one bid this time around from P and L. Uh, and we recommend that this that the council go ahead and approve that contract.
We don't, I don't have that information. Is there a a number?
It's the last, last page in your packet.
Uh, and. Twelve thousand one hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Oh, there we go. Okay.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept that bid.
Go move.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, uh, do I need to do a roll call on that, I think? Roll call, uh, Cam, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Counselor Montero?
Yes.
Counselor Pazowski?
Yes.
Council President Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Phillips?
Yes.
Counselor Horning?
Yes.
Counselor Frank?
Yes.
Mayor Barber?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries unanimously. Okay, um, come to the end of our agenda. I'll turn to the city staff and Dale, do you have some more comments you'd like to make?
Uh, just as everybody knows, Saturday was a very nice day and hotels were full in town. Uh, we've got another weekend that is supposedly going to be nice. Hopefully the same thing will happen. Um, and we're ready for them.
Wonderful. Now, the town was busy over the weekend, sure, certainly was, yeah. John, real, any comments you'd like to make tonight?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor, just one. Uh, I mentioned during our goal setting uh that uh we believe the new website would be live about February seventeenth. Uh, we've cut over the first portion of that, so pretty much any day. It's kinda um, if anybody's familiar with uh moving websites, um, I guess the the best way I can compare it to is is it's kinda like moving houses. Uh, you're you're changing addresses and and there's a lot of stuff that goes on in the background uh to make all that finalize. So um, we we're already working on it. We have staff working on different pages, uh, but all of the contents have migrated over minutes, agendas, all that stuff historically that we've had on our old website has been migrated. So really, it's just that kinda that, I guess, getting the keys so that you can open the front door, um, but we expect that to happen this week.
Great, that'll be a great move forward. Excellent. Kim, any comments you'd like to make this evening?
I do not. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Mark, uh, comments from the city manager?
Just a couple, uh, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Budget Committee, first Budget Committee meeting will be April nineteenth. Want to make sure all of you get that on your calendar. Um, I do want to give credit, well, first of all, uh, let me again thank Dale and and all the people in Public Works for the great work that they do because uh they do an awesome job for the city. Uh, but in addition to that, uh, a number of our buildings have reopened. Uh, and I want to give staff in those buildings credit. Uh, the Visitors Bureau is, has reopened. Uh, the library has reopened, uh, and City Hall has reopened, so uh, it's nice to have a lot of these buildings back uh running again. Um, I want to make sure that all the counselors are aware, there's a number of cities that still are closed down and uh uh, I think it's to the credit of staff again that that we can open these buildings because uh we have to clean them um, after every day, uh, and uh so they're ready to reopen the next day. Uh, and it's not easy to do, but uh we want to do everything we can uh to help uh, the taxpayers in Seaside be able to take care of their business and uh it was fascinating. Um, we opened City Hall back up and all of a sudden, we've got people at the window all the time. Uh, I'm surprised how fast people got used to coming back in uh to do business and uh, but uh, we really appreciate the work uh that staff has done. Uh, and Mr. Mayor, I wanted to uh remind you there, we had some conversation about setting up a workshop uh to finalize your goals. Um, and um uh, so I'm just uh bringing that up to make sure that if you wanted to do that, that that we take a look at that.
I was gonna suggest that in my closing uh remarks. Um, definitely what I had proposed was that we set a meeting prior to a council meeting uh in the near future, uh, either the first meeting ideally in March or the second uh to uh look at the results uh from our pro- project and some of the suggestions you and John have made in terms of uh how we are going to make sure these all happen. So um, look at your calendars. Uh, the meetings in March are what dates?
The March eighth and the twenty-second.
Are you thinking um an hour, an hour and a half? What are you thinking?
I was thinking some uh interviews, so.
That's right, we had interviews coming, yeah. I was thinking an hour and a half at least, um.
That, I was thinking an hour and a half to two at the most.
Yeah.
But, um.
Well, we have interviews coming up on the first meeting in March.
Which interviews are those?
That would be the Library Board.
Well, since the Library Board is still open and there is a possibility of another one coming, um, might that be postponed till the twenty-second of March?
I'm open to that. If there's no uh urgency.
There isn't.
And then we will be closing the uh Planning Commission then that part of that week. And then we'll simply decide at that point whether we're gonna make an appointment or um if there's other applicants, then we would pu- push them to the end of the month as well. Okay? Let's uh let's plan on an hour and a half before uh our first meeting in uh March uh to work on our goals.
So that would be um five thirty?
Yes.
I would mention that uh you did decide to leave uh the Planning Commission vacancy open until March third, so should you have an applicant, you may want to have something there. Is that correct?
Yeah, we we certainly uh would be under no pressure to make a decision even uh when the position closes. We we could postpone that till later, yeah. Okay, Mark, anything else?
So that would behoove us all to also already put in our calendars an hour before the March twenty-second meeting to hold that for interviews.
Yes, that's right.
No, sir, nothing else.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, uh, thank you. Um, council, um, I'm gonna start with David tonight.
Uh, don't have anything to uh add. Uh, glad to have businesses back open and looks like we may even be moving to the next level, so that is a that is good news.
It's encouraging, for sure. Thank you, David. Uh, Tom Horning?
A couple of items, Mayor. Uh, first off, I enjoyed listening to everybody's compliments for Dale McDowell. Uh, I share everybody's thoughts and feelings about working with Dale. He's he's a very capable and a highly organized fellow. And given that he gets picked on all the time, he's remarkably um relaxed. I'm surprised he doesn't have uh worried worried behaviors, you might say. Uh, he holds it together really well, and I'm, it's a privilege to work with him. Uh, um, the other item, uh, uh, back on the uh fourteenth of December, we talked about uh developing policy for uh fundraising and management of of committees and procedures for all of the committees. Uh, and I would like to get rolling on that. Uh, you you did sort of give us the go-ahead, but it's also in our uh uh our goals.
Yeah.
And I was gonna ask, would you prefer to wait on the to complete the goals or would let us move forward and kill this off while we can?
I think it needs to be done sooner, yeah.
I think so too. Okay, well, if you don't mind, I'll I'll uh take the lead on that and and talk to staff and we'll figure out how to pull the right people together and and take care of it.
Good, good.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Good. Randy?
Um, well, we've got a lot of stuff coming up, budget, uh, goal-setting. Uh, it's a busy spring, so I'm gonna save any comments I have till I further sip through this stuff, but uh once again, hats off to um the city and our management and everybody involved with it.
Thank you. Dana?
I have two things, well, really three. Again, way to go, Dale. Awesome job. Um, two things, I'd like to um invite everybody to check out the um Bob Chisholm Center because um the donor tree that uh symbolizes all the people that donated money to uh allow us to do the remodel has been put up and it's absolutely gorgeous. It's there in on the wall in the main hall. So um, please stop by and and check it out. And the other thing is, is on a personal note, I just would like to publicly thank Gretchen Darnell for her over twenty-some years of being Director of Sales at the Convention Center because she is retiring.
Oh, I hadn't heard that.
Hats off you, Gretchen, um, and Godspeed and enjoy your retirement.
Yes, here, here, hadn't heard that.
There's a uh open house uh at the Convention Center on Thursday from one to four to go in and say goodbye to.
Okay, good. Good, thank you, Steve. Tita Montero?
Yes, um, I think I would like to say uh good going to Dale again. I know that Dale not only has all of these things on his plate, but he's got a lot more and uh that we don't even see. So that comment about him not being a very worried-looking person is a is a good comment because he uh carries the the weight of the seaside world very well on his shoulders. And I think that's all for me.
Good, thank you. Council President Steve?
Um, I already said what I think of Dale, so. Uh, he's an amazing guy, and one of the things uh he said, uh, you know, he works with the Transportation Commission, he gave us an update and uh the things that we had the open, um, the hearings. And, uh, the things that we had the open, um, the hearings about, uh, last fall, uh, are taking place. Crosswalks on Spruce are, uh, in place. We're going others in soon. And the no parking is in up on Sunset. And, and all that appears to be very suitable to the neighbors in the area. Uh, Prom One Hundred, we got things coming up. Their first official thing is gonna be in, uh, May, at least at this point, a hundred K run on the prom, so I'm sure you all wanna sign up for that. Gonna run overnight from the fourteenth through the fifteenth, and the Park and Rec District's doing it. There'll be a chalk art event, hopefully. And, uh, we'll see what else happens. My, uh, thing from January sixth, nineteen twenty-one pertaining to the Prom Committee has been appointed to take up the matter, uh, then maybe this is something else for Dale to think about. Take up the matter of municipal electric lighting plant for the new waterfront walk and for Second and First Avenues and the proposed pier. The matter has been looked upon with favor by the council owing to the fact that the city now owns sufficient power and with a small additional cost, a plant can be installed that will save the city considerable money in the long run. And, uh, there was also a small note right below that. This one's really Dale. The old city garbage truck, which has been a source of expense for the taxpayers for several years, has finally been ordered disposed of and will be sold by the Public Property Committee. Now Dale would reuse it somehow.
Surprised he doesn't still have it.
It's, it's Mark's weekend rig.
Well, thank you all. Um, a good meeting, uh, lots of good work. Uh, one thought that, uh, has been run past me a couple of times and I forget at the end of the meeting and it certainly isn't gonna be appropriate here very soon, is a consideration, uh, would the council entertain the possibility of moving our meetings to six PM rather than seven PM? Um, I don't know whether that's something that, uh, would float. I know a lot of, uh, councils in the area, uh, meet earlier uh, so people can go right after work and then haul a little earlier. Something to think about.
The, the only issue I think that that may raise is when we do have interviews or other things that we wanna use time before at four.
Yeah, that's true, that's true. Well, passing it on, uh, nothing urgent about that because we're gonna be filling up the month, the March, it looks like. We wouldn't be able to, to do that. Uh, you know, um, I shared this quote earlier, uh, with Tita. It's just stayed with me all, all week. As, as we wrestle with the, the challenges, uh, in dealing with humankind, uh, the homeless situation, uh, the COVID-nineteen, uh, issue, uh, all of the problems that, that we face, uh, as a city. A friend of mine shared this simple quote that has just kept me thinking, and I'm gonna do the same thing to you. Says this, "The solution is in the symptoms." The solution is in the symptoms. Think about that. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you all for a good night. Thank you.